I'm going to finish calling roll. Commissioner Newton, are you present?
Oh, God, yes.
Okay. Chair Jansen?
I think I am. Okay, excuses for the delay. We had some technical difficulties, as you can tell. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda or any amendments?
So. Oops. So the third item, 31 Maple, the application number 24-02, the property owner decided to pull their their application, withdraw their. The property owner withdrew their application. So.
Okay, thank you. Right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda without item number three?
I'll move to approve the agenda without item three.
I'll second.
Okay, Swift?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi. Thank you. I'll read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at the commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of the commission members, staff, members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should, one, limit their presentations to three minutes; two, provide their comments by email as described above; three, state their view and concern succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first to be entered in the record. With that, I'd like to open the floor for public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
I do have one hand raised online.
Okay, go ahead.
Kristi, go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I would like to express some thoughts about the Victory Village. In reading that individuals who have mobility impairment or end or are in wheelchairs are located on the third floor of the units, really concerned in understanding that there's been some power outages, and it appears that if the elevator goes down, it goes down once and then it's stuck. And as far as the safety and welfare of residents potentially not being able to be evacuated in the event of an emergency and putting our first responders at an increased risk for having to evacuate downstairs. It's just a really significant concern. And just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no more hands raised online.
Not seeing anybody in the public hereby. The public hearing items is or not the public comment. Comment period is hereby closed. And since there are no items on the consent calendar, we'll move on to the public hearing items. Can we get staff report on item number one?
And before we do that, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, thank you.
Because I'm within 300 feet of the.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so this project is located at 339 Cypress Drive. The project includes legalization of two freestanding decks. One of the decks is a square 144 square foot structure, and the other is a circular 113 square foot structure. The decks begin at grade and reach five feet above grade at their southernmost sides. The deck framing is pressure treated Douglas fir, and the decking and railings will be redwood. The decks comply with all the setback regulations. They don't, you know, they're permeable, so they don't cause the property to be out of compliance with the lot coverage limitation, and they don't count towards floor area ratio. And they do not exceed the accessory structure height limit of 15 feet, even with their safety railings, they only get to about nine feet above grade where they're the tallest. The project requires a conditional use permit because the site does not meet the minimum size requirements based on its 57% slope. In order to comply with the minimum parcel size, a parcel with a 57% slope would have to be 59,000 square feet in size, and the site's only 42,750 square feet. That's very large by Fairfax standards for hillside area sites. The purpose of the conditional use permit process is to allow the proper integration into Fairfax of uses which may be suitable only in certain locations in the town or in a zone, or only if the uses are designed or laid out on the site in a particular manner. As I stated before, the proposed decks maintain setbacks that that far exceed the minimum required and combined minimum and combined setback requirements. The decks simply provide more usable outdoor living space for the residents on this very steeply sloping property. The largest setbacks maintained by the the large setbacks maintained by the decks will minimize noise impacts on neighbors when they are in use by the residents. The proposed 250 square feet of decking is just a little bit larger than a one car garage, and it's minimal considering the large 42,750 square foot size of the site. And it's a better way to create usable outdoor living area than excavating level patio areas which disturb the hillside and the vegetation. Therefore, the approval of the conditional use permit is in the public interests and for the protection of the general health, safety, and welfare of the community. And therefore, we're recommending that you approve application 2335 by adopting resolution 2023-36, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And I will correct the parcel number that's incorrect on the beginning of the staff report. Parcel number should actually read 003131-49, not 141. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commission? Richard Newton?
Thank you. I, Linda, is this the type of approval that you and the planning director might think was more appropriate as a ministerial approval as opposed to a planning commission approval?
Oh, yes. I'll say it again. Oh, yes.
Any more questions?
No.
Is the applicant here and wish to speak? Would you like to speak? No. Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the commission. Is there any item to discuss? Is there a motion?
You're not going to have public hearing?
I skipped open mic for the public. Excuse me. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Open comment period, we're closed. Bring it back to the commission. Is there any discussion items? Is there a motion?
Assuming Commissioner Newton does not have a comment, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm sorry, there's one. I have a one question. Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. In the resolution, there's just let me just see if this is real or. Just trying to make my notes make sense here. Okay, number 14 on. It looks like the last page of the reso.
Yeah, so that's. That's something new we started to add. And I actually think on this one, since the project's done, we should eliminate 14.
Yeah, I didn't know what it meant by on one page of the project plan.
We've actually, we've refined it as we've kind of gone along now. It doesn't have to be included. It doesn't have to take up one page, so we've changed our wording, and we're going to include it. Here's what's happening. We used to attach our resolution to the building permit plans, and people are taking them off and losing them and claiming that they don't remember what they were. And so we're starting to require them to include them. It doesn't have to take up a whole page, but it has to be incorporated as part of the building permit plans. And that's, we started putting it in everything. But I think since this project's basically done, we should eliminate number 14.
Then Commissioner Pfeffer, I would go ahead with whatever you were going to do with that addition.
Sure thing. I would move to approve resolution number 2023-36, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving an application for a conditional use permit to complete construction on two accessory landscaping decks totaling 257 square feet at the rear of the residence at 339 Cypress Drive with one amendment to remove item 14 from the recitals.
I'll second.
Okay, Kelly?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Motion passes and maybe appeals to the town clerk in a manner described by the town council within 10 days. Fees may apply.
And I think Commissioner Swift is going to return in good time, and I'm going to bow out because I'm feeling unwell and tired. And I'm just gonna, as soon as she comes back in, I think you guys will still have your forum. All right.
Hope you feel better soon.
Thank you. Have a good night, you guys.
Okay, item number two on the agenda.
Okay, so the property is located at 290 Cascade Drive, and the project proposes to enclose approximately 161 square foot covered entry porch and convert a half bathroom to a full bathroom by adding a shower. The square footage would increase from about 1,130 square feet to about 1,290 square feet. The property is developed with a two-story house. It was originally constructed in 1924. It subsequently had the lower floor converted into an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit. And the upper floor is the primary residence with two bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. The property is in the RS6 zone, and it's also within a wildland urban interface zone. The project site doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirements of the RS6 zone, so it requires a conditional use permit for the improvements. And the house doesn't meet the individual eastern side setback, and that also causes it to not meet the combined side setbacks because the square footage would be added within the combined side setbacks. Combined side setback variance is also required. Findings can be made to approve both the conditional use permit and the combined side yard setback variance. I mean, the porch is already there, and it's almost enclosed now as it is. It just doesn't have walls along the sides or a real roof. And enclosing it would not change the building footprint or any of the setbacks, the height of the house, the lot coverage or the residential character of the building. The FAR would increase, but it's only going to increase from 16% to 20%, and that's well within the 40% limitation. There are many other properties in the neighborhood and in the subdivision, the Cascade subdivision, that have buildings that encroach into the setbacks. And they also have two bathrooms, two full bathrooms. So it's also located at the back of the house, so it really wouldn't have any impact on anybody in the roadway. And it's pretty far from the neighbor at 33, or excuse me, it's 33 feet from the other, from the neighbor, the closest neighbor, and that neighbor's signed a letter of support for the project as well. It would have some beneficial impacts of improving fire safety and energy efficiency, and it would increase privacy, and it would also create a more accessible bathroom for the house. The site is pretty narrow. It's 52 feet wide. So that's, that combined with the fact that the house was constructed in 1924, 50 years before the combined side setback requirement was created. Those are some of the special circumstances that warrant granting the variance. And it would be an unreasonable hardship to require them to to not approve the variance because they wouldn't be able to increase the energy efficiency of the home or improve the the fire safety or, yeah. So that that concludes the staff report. And the recommendation is to approve the application 2401 by adopting resolution 202404.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Swift?
I had a couple of questions. I don't know if you mentioned the northern spotted owl.
Oh, yes, sorry. I incorrectly stated in the staff report that this property was not within a half mile of a northern spotted owl nesting site, but that's actually not the criteria that's used. It's a quarter mile. So sorry about that.
Two other questions. How would this improve fire safety by enclosing in the?
So it would improve it, I believe, because it would prevent embers from blowing in the uncovered area in in combusting and causing a fire. And also, the siding that's going to be used is cement board siding. So it it might not be the same as the wood siding in the rest of the house, but it's going to match an appearance in that. That would be a bit of a fire safety improvement. Did you have any other?
Okay, so no significant differences other than we're enclosing and we're using.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the third question is, from my information, we're getting, we're asking for a variance on the combined side setbacks, right? Would we not also have a variance for a side setback?
Well, that side of the property meets the minimum five foot.
Because in here, it has side setbacks existing four feet and eight feet. That's why I was wondering about the four foot.
Yeah, so that that's on the other side that the that the porch isn't on. So. Yeah. So the porch, the porch. So if you look at the one side with the four foot, that's not where the porch is being enclosed. It's being enclosed on the opposite side.
Right, but I'm looking at the table in the staff report where we have a combined side setbacks of 12 feet, and it says proposed no change. And we have side setbacks of four and eight feet with no change. But the side setbacks require five and five. That's where I'm confused.
So the the one, the the area where the the addition is occurring is not in the the area that's all that's four feet from the the side. Maybe I'm not explaining this very well.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So is it that we don't need a side yard variance because it's not in the four feet side, but we still do need the combined side yard setback because it's still in the only 12 feet out of 20?
Right, so you don't, you would only need a minimum side yard setback variance if, let's say that the deck was going to be pushed out further so that it maintained less than a five foot setback on the west side of the property. Then you would need a minimum side setback. The other side of the house that's four feet is existing, and it's not changing. So so that side meets the minimum. But when you add it to the other side, you don't meet the combined of 20. So that's what you need. You're creating new living space in the combined setback, but you're not creating new living space in the minimum five foot setback because it's eight feet from the property line. Combined setbacks are very confusing, but that.
And I guess I was confused because we're not changing in the table the 12 foot, right? So it was 12 foot, and it's still 12 foot. But we're adding into, we're adding more into that existing.
You're changing what's in the, right?
You're adding to it, right?
It's going to be living space.
Got it.
Yeah.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Nope. Okay, does the applicant would like to talk to the commission?
Good evening, Jody Tims, one of the owners in Silver. I just want to thank everybody who's helped us get here. We're really glad to finally have this before you. So the staff, our architect, who I believe is online. And we're just, this is something we've wanted to do for a really long time. As it has been described, it's an existing porch. We have netting all around it and a plastic roof that my father put on a long time ago that now leaks. And the embers, yeah, we're worried about them getting trapped in within that right at the front door in terms of fire. But efficiency wise, energy efficiency wise, that's the southwest side of the house gets super hot on that deck. I mean, extremely hot. And it taxes the HVAC system that we have. So to actually have a roof on there and have two walls that aren't there yet is going to help with that. We also hope to put solar panels on that part of our roof in addition to the other part at some point. So these are the reasons we want also privacy. We don't mind so much looking at Renee Goddard's yard and vice versa. We're great friends, and we've been there forever. But it would give both of us a bit more privacy, so. And then putting the cement siding on, we're really, we did that in the front part of the house. So we're slowly trying to move around the house and make the house more fire safe. So, yeah, for all those reasons, we're hoping you approve it. And we really appreciate everybody's work, Cara, et cetera, everybody who's helped get us to this point, so. Oh, I just want to say too, of course, the bathroom would be really great. You know, mobility issues increase as we get older. We're over both over 70s. So having a walk-in shower is really going to be helpful to minimize falls and, you know, just be safer all the way around. So we're excited about that part, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I see no hands online. Chair Jansen?
Okay, with that, we're closing and bringing it back to the commission. Do we have any discussion items? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-04, resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application 24-01 for a conditional use permit and a combined side yard setback variance for the enclosure of an approximately 161 square foot covered entry porch and conversion of a half bathroom to a full bathroom at 290 Cascade Drive.
Second.
Okay, Swift?
Yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. There is an appeal period of 10 days, and I will have to look at how it's exactly worded have to be submitted to the town clerk in a manner prescribed by the town council within 10 days. Fees may apply. Thank you. With that, item number three is postponed. So we're going on to item number four, which is, I believe, the meeting minutes. Oh, no, that's not true. I'm wrong.
I have a brief presentation on the annual planning report on the agenda.
Yes, please.
I just need to share my screen here, and I think I'm already. Think all I have to do, oh, hold on. Share screen first. All right, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
So, okay. The. Every year, we're required to do an annual planning report, which is kind of a routine thing that we submit to HCD. Well, it used to be more of a routine thing that we submit to HCD every year on April 1st, and it's a numerical exercise to report on building permits that have been issued to show our progress towards the regional housing needs allocation. And over the years, it's kind of evolved where we're expected to report on more and more. It used to be just building permits. Now it's building permits and occupancy. And then we're also required to kind of do a review of the the programs that we have, particularly in the housing element, and how we're implementing those programs. Like you may recall, all those zoning amendments that we did in advance of the housing element adoption. That's actually part of that, is those are programs that are inside the housing element that we're implementing. So, anyway, so and then I also figured this would be a good opportunity to do kind of a preview of coming attractions, if you wanted to, about what we need to do in 2024, just to kind of update other portions of the general plan, not just related to the housing element, but there's also a couple of state laws that have come down, particularly in relation to emergency services and fire safety and that type of thing that we're required to implement through our general plan. So I'll take you through this. And this is intended to be a study session, so it doesn't have to be so formal as I give the presentation and you wait for comments. So if you feel like jumping in, feel free, or you can wait till the end. Well, we don't have to be too formal on this particular study session. So first off, just to explain what we've just gotten through the Rena. Generally, the generally, the general plan is on the the bottom bar chart here is we have, it's called the 2010 to 2030 general plan. But unlike the housing element, there's really not a jurisdictions aren't expected to have a very particular timeframe with the general plan. Like it could be the 2020 to 2040 general plan. Fairfax chose the 2010 to 2030 timeframe. They adopted it in 2012. And then it is basically valid until it gets replaced. So you could, I mean, we would intend to adopt a new general plan on 2030 or shortly thereafter, but you could potentially never adopt a new general plan. And this particular general plan would continue to be effective until it was replaced by by an update. And you also don't have to update the entire general plan. I can think in 2012 is a comprehensive update to the general plan. You could adopt it like an element at a time, like, for example, we did the housing element. And as you'll be seeing in a couple of slides, we're going to be updating the public safety element. We're going to be updating land use element. So you can update it kind of a piece at a time, or you can update it comprehensively. Now, the housing element's a little bit different. As as you may recall, that's required to line up with the regional housing needs allocation cycle of eight years. So we just updated that. And so that is valid until 2031. And then after that point, we're required to adopt a new housing element. So it's, so the housing element's required. The general plan is kind of optional in terms of when jurisdictions update it. The, just a couple of examples of why the general plan is important and kind of underpins the zoning ordinance and also the capital improvement program for the community and other activities of the town undertakes are required to be consistent with the general plan.
May I ask a question? Which one of the eight is not required?
Town center. All of the other elements are required. Land use, circulation, housing, open space, conservation, safety and noise.
Okay.
So. The, this is just as what we've already experienced, the RENA, this is the housing element. As you're aware, we have to, we are targeting 490 units.
I have a question about that, maybe.
Yes.
We'll do it right away. Okay. Oops, there's the mic. In the prior period, 2015, 2022, 147 units were achieved. 61 were required. That's 86 more units than required. In other words, 240% was created. Can we roll those 86 units over into the new RENA cycle in 2023?
No, we cannot. And I know it's not fair.
Yes. Okay. So then, no, it makes no sense, basically. So then apart from protesting in Sacramento, I would then recommend that for this new period, we'll cap any new units to 490 and kick the ones to the next period.
Yeah, and there are jurisdictions that do, like, you know, they can do certain things like if they know that they have a big apartment complex coming up, they can. And then there's also a new thing as Linda and I are aware of is that it, the RENA numbers used to be counted based on when the building permit was issued. And now it's based on when the unit is complete and ready for occupancy. So it could be that we may be picking up some of the units from the last cycle because they may have been issued a building permit a couple of years ago and then they may be being completed now. So it's only going to be a few units, but anyway.
No, that would be a lucky draw, but I think so we, if we know that you can't roll them over, we could create a policy to be smart about it.
Right.
So that, right, because it doesn't make any sense. If we were to build 800 units in this period, then why would you not, right? It gets crazy. You're running out of juice.
Yep. Okay. And also the other thing to keep in mind is that it's just land supply. So hypothetically, if we keep land supply available for 490 units and if we don't produce 490 units, well, we still have the land available. So we do, I mean, you know, the HCD does like to see units get built, but if the town's doing all they can to create the framework and the land supply for the units and they just don't get built because developers just start, simply are not interested or Twelma's too expensive or Fairfax is too far away from 101. You know, there's, all those things are outside of our control. So anyway. That's, but that's part of the debate and battle that's going on with housing right now. So. So anyway, so the housing element, just briefly, we have actually accomplished quite a few of the programs that are in our housing element as far as the code updates. So as I mentioned, you're kind of creating the framework for creating those units, particularly the workforce housing overlay, which was just adopted by the council last week and it'll be effective in 30 days, is that that actually creates the framework to provide a significant number of units to implement the RENA. We also participate, we are now participating in regional ADU collaborative efforts. That's a program in the housing element. So even if we, even if we're not, it's not just about RENA. There's, there's other programs that are in the housing element that we've already implemented and that we'll, and that we're continuing to implement, you know, to create more housing opportunity for, for all sorts of people.
On this page, I had just one question in the for 2024, 2025, I was wondering how much or if any of what's listed there was included or, you know, set aside in the town budget for the fiscal year that ends this June 30th, or if all of that stuff has to wait until the second half of the year before we start?
Well, in fact, we are hiring a new planner and that's in the current budget. So that person will be helping us get a, get a start on that. And then, yeah, then that, then that planning position would, you know, hypothetically continue into the next budget cycle.
Yeah. So, so this is already starting now.
Correct. Yep. And we've, we've been recruiting that planner and hopefully we'll bring them on board soon and I'll either maybe sitting, see the sitting here and I'll be introducing them, I hope, within the next month or two. So. The next element is the land use element. So this is these are just kind of a summary of the goals. It has everything to do with annexation, protecting community character, diversity through affordable housing, preserving historic buildings, protecting open space and then along with the safety element, kind of protecting from wildfires and other catastrophes. So we put under regional recent accomplishments, we, you know, we did a little, we did some amendments to the zoning code related to ridge line protections and creating additional opportunities for cluster housing and, and open space. We've changed the code to encourage some infill development related to the workforce housing overlay and we've adopted clear and objective design standards. We do have some, I would call them consistency updates related to the housing element and the safety element. There's certain things in the, in the land use element that just needs to be changed so that it's consistent with the housing element and helps implement the housing element and we'll be bringing those back to the planning commission here in the next couple of months.
Quick question on that and the safety element. I'll have more questions when you get done, but there's no specific timeline. Correct on the safety and, and.
Correct. We don't have to get those adopted within a certain timeframe. There's no statutory requirement. But, but we do want to get it done soon. Like this calendar year, if possible, like have it adopted this calendar year. That's kind of the target.
Because I would, with any of the things that we do here with our general plan or any of these elements, because we don't have that statutory deadline that we've been working towards, I would want to make sure that we have enough community engagement.
Yeah.
And multiple meetings if needed to go through these things.
Yep. Yep. And we'll be, and we'll be talking more about that at an upcoming meeting. We have the consultant kind of working on a memo that kind of describes what actually needs to be changed. And so we don't really know the full scope of that until we, until we get that memo, which we are expecting within a few weeks. So. Okay. Circulation, as you know, Fairfax is kind of a known commodity. There's probably not any new streets being created. So it's mostly just fixing up and maintaining the streets that we have. We have been successful getting funding for road repairs recently. I guess I would say, believe it or not, there is roads being fixed out there. And there has been efforts towards expanding kind of electric vehicle infrastructure. There's, there is some funding resources out there to for charging stations, that type of thing, but it just takes a while for that to kind of get put together. But you should be starting to see some of that in the coming years. And.
Does anybody have any questions on?
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I was, you know, curious when reading this and saw the no significant need to expand existing infrastructure and just was wondering more what is considered infrastructure for purposes of the first and second bullets? Because I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, with it hasn't been a big topic of conversation for over a year now, but during the early parts of the housing element, like even just water supply for all of the homes. And, you know, I don't know if, if this is intended to include that sort of utility infrastructure.
Yeah, this is primarily just related to transportation. But, but I think our general plan doesn't really say too much about other utilities. So that's probably a weak point of our current general plan.
Yeah.
I had a question about the road repair. I think it was a few meetings back for the council presentation on the status of the roads in Fairfax was not so good as we know. So the funding for road repairs, what kind of funding sources do you think there might be available to increase the effort on that program?
There's, there are funding opportunities for like transit corridors and that type of thing, if for multimodal type transportation improvements, that's probably the best funding sources that are out there. And those generally would come through Marin County. And then there's just kind of general kind of gas tax money that's also available again through Marin County that we would get our share in order to improve roads with. So there, there is, there is some money and it's, it's not, never enough, but. And then the other, the, the thing that's related to the general plan though, is that those improvements have to be consistent with what's in the general plan. So, so there is an evaluation that, that happens really in relation to the general plan to make sure that what we're doing, the money that's being spent is, implements the general plan. Of course, if you have, you know, a million projects that you need to do to implement the general plan, then you're only going to get so far, but. The town center elements. So this, there is a, the main thing I wanted to point out here is I think there was a lot of, from what I understand, and I was not here, but from what I understand, there was a lot of effort to create the town center element and put it into the general plan. There was a significant amount of public outreach. There is a program in the housing element to create a town center plan, which is a kind of a, a plan that sits outside the general plan. To, you know, take a, take another look at the town center element. So so that may be coming out of some of this consultant work is, you know, if, if there's some deficiencies with the town center element, how can those be addressed with the, this town center plan, which is required by 2026? So anyway, that's kind of like a teaser.
Let me back up here a little bit. So the town center plan was an optional element to the general plan.
Yes.
And that had a lot of public discussion and concern for a lot of the elements within it. So you're saying that by 2026, I got a little confused here. You said there was.
Yeah, there's a program in the housing element to create a town center plan, which is kind of a plan that sits, it's more of an implementation plan versus something that goes in the general plan. Yeah. So I, I understand that it's confusing because there's two different things. There's a town center element, then there's a town center plan. So, and, and we, there are, apparently we have some things that are in the town center element right now that are not consistent with the housing element. So the consultant is going to tell us what those are and we're going to be bringing those back to the, to the planning commission to, and then explore ways to correct those in terms of, I think densities and heights and that type of thing. So. Yes, I, I think, yeah, that's a coming attractions thing. So.
So on, on that note, I presume there is a plan to engage the public thoroughly to develop that vision.
Yeah, the, I, I think there was a lot, from what I understand, there was a lot of public outreach with the town center elements. So.
But that's different than what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, for the town center plan.
Element, there was a lot of outreach and concern and part of that was dealing with, you know, blocking off roads and things like that in the town center. So you mentioned that we have a town center plan in the housing element.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So I guess the question was public outreach and comment on that.
Yeah.
Versus the town center plan. That's the optimal element in our current general plan.
Yep. So there's those two different things. So the, the town center element will have some amendments made to it in the short term to make it consistent with the housing elements. And so that's going to get taken care of within the next year. And then the longer term thing is the town center plan, which sits outside the general plan is going to take place by 2026. And that's a mechanism, it's kind of related to the workforce housing overlay and how to create more housing and create more mixed use development. And make the town center function a little better as far as a mixed use community. And that's by 2026. So that's similar to like, you know, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that sits outside the general plan or something else that the zoning ordinance that sits outside the general plan. So it's, it's kind of this separate document that's out there is more of an implementation device than part of the general plan.
But that I think is my focus. The, the creation of that plan, will that involve its own cycle of public?
Correct. Yes, it'll be its own project. And we don't even have a scope or a budget for that.
Right. 2026 is way out there, but so, yeah, there's time to do that.
Yep.
As a side note, has it ever been considered to, because we're talking about history, to declare the town center a historic town in the official sense? It's a side note. I mean, I don't know if that's ever come up in any consideration because there's a lot of interest for like, well, the town should stay the way it is. There are still elements from the 30s in the town, obviously.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware.
And maybe.
Linda, maybe.
Speak a little to that after you go through this, because I have some comments, because I realize I don't think any of you were on the planning commission in 2017, 2018, when we went through with the planning commission there, then a general plan overview and all the tasks that were identified in the general plan. So I'm going to speak a little bit to that once at the end. But there was some discussion of that within that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Please continue.
Open space element. I think we're pretty familiar with this because of the amendments that we've done and some of the projects that the planning commissioners reviewed. The, you know, the cluster zoning ordinance falls under that because that's a policy in the open space elements. And then I think also the dark sky ordinance that we're considering would fall under the open space because that's, it protects the the outdoor environment from light pollution. So I think this is, I'm, I'm just kind of going through the elements and, and I think as Commissioner Swift is suggesting, there's probably updates that we've considered in the past to, or implementation measures related to this element that we could discuss further. Conservation elements. This is kind of has a lot of overlap with the open space elements. Its stated purpose is to conserve natural and cultural resources, but then also kind of identify these larger, more global issues. And so this is where we get into the climate action plan. And there's some programs within this conservation element to basically have a climate action plan. And we have a staff person that works on that implementation. And I think most, most of those most of that implementation goes through the town council, but there could be some role with the planning commission with that in coming, coming into the future. We also have green building codes that are called for within this element.
So I have a question on the conservation element, because I know that the housing element, new housing element requires land use and safety updates. Conservation element. I found, and, and I had a question on this, I had a question on this, kind of when we were talking at the start prior to you of the whole housing element update. It says upon the next revision of the housing element on or after January 1st, 2009, the conservation element shall identify rivers, creeks, streams, flood corridors, riparian habitats and land that may accommodate floodwater for purposes of groundwater recharge and stormwater management. I don't think some of that may currently be in our conservation elements. may currently be in our conservation element. So my question on that was, and it kind of frames it along with the land use and safety requirement after a housing element update. Is there a timeframe within that? Because obviously, we've had housing element updates after 2009. So what's, where does updating a conservation element, if we don't have those things addressed in it, fall?
Just to question some of that. Yeah, I think some of that will get addressed. I mean, that's a good question. We can follow up on that. But I think some of that will get addressed when we do the public, when we get through the safety element, because there's a, a big mapping component to the safety element. And it doesn't just include wildfire mapping. It also includes other hazard mapping. And that would probably pick up the floodplains. But yeah, it may not. Yeah. Might not fully address the conservation element, though.
I had a question on this. So in terms of, I was thinking about the planning commission's role in this and sort of like for the housing element, we have a lot of programs because we say, you know, housing is a public good, it's a good for the town. So that's why if you develop low income housing, you get the density bonus and you can build more, or you get through, you know, for ADUs, a permit or fee waivers. To the extent that we consider conservation, both, you know, the natural resources, but even to Chair Jansen's point, historical and cultural preservation, a public good for the town, are there programs that other communities have implemented or that we could to also sort of streamline or ease the burden on people developing their properties in line with, you know, certain goals. I'm thinking about, for example, that Alima Road property project that we had. And that's a, that was like an old historic building and they were updating it. And they put a lot of effort into their application and package to show how they were going to maintain a lot of the historic character, I assume. That's more expensive than just getting, getting rid of everything and just putting in a cheap, easy update. So to, to encourage more projects like that and to encourage more of this sort of climate conscious developments are their programs that we can look at, just in terms of the planning department's input.
Yeah, yeah, we can, I mean, I think we can, if there's certain things we want to put on the list of things to explore in the future. I mean, that's part of the purpose of this meeting is to start thinking about those things. To, we can, you know, add programs to the list and consider them for the future if, and then we want to try to tie it back to something that's currently in the conservation element so that we can point to something, a policy or program that we're actually implementing that's, that's in here already.
But that aspect too, is for the housing element, I believe, one of the elements, one of the items in the EIR, right? So we had that discussion last time that we've got something in there.
Yeah.
If a house, if a building is older than 45 years, I think.
Yeah, it's either 45 or 50, but yeah.
I think, yeah, I know he went with one of those and made it more stringent. I thought it was 45, but I could be wrong, that those need to be looked at from that historical perspective as well. So on an individual basis, those things can be theoretically required since they're in the EIR. For the housing element, which is the whole DIR project is the whole housing element. Addressing like a historical status of the neighborhood of the downtown is, is kind of a different thing.
Yeah, in some case you may have to do historic resource evaluation. Same as you'd have to do like a, you know,
Yeah, we had.
biological study.
We had a volunteer that was going to start that process for us and it just kind of never got going for the downtown area.
All right. Yeah. Yep. And so, yeah, so, so part of this is going to be a wishlist item, items, but you know, we can, we can work, work through that. So. Then the safety element will probably be the big effort, just because it's, it is one thing that we, we have to do. And it's also important to the community because we do have significant wildfire risk, as we hear a lot from public comment. So this will be something that we will be working on pretty aggressively in the coming year.
Just a reminder on that, that because it's also dear to my heart from an emergency preparedness and, and aspect, that we had the planning commission previously, when we started the housing element, spent a lot of time reviewing the safety element as it existed. And then updates or changes that were presented by the prior consultants. And there were a lot of comments and concerns that were provided. So when we look at the safety element, and it comes back to us, I want to make sure that we all have those concerns and address them as well. And what the prior work was we did.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can try to go back and, and research that and because, yeah, Diabatzi is currently, as I mentioned, is currently working in kind of a scope of work to, to bring that safety element back. And a lot of it is mapping, but a lot of it is new policies and, and programs that would come into the safety element. And the, the specific one that's required is emergency evacuation routes. That's one thing that, that's required. In particular, we're required to identify everywhere where there's kind of only one way out, which is a lot of Fairfax. So. So that'd be an important thing to, to do with this update. And then the last element is the noise element. We, you know, the overall purpose is to, is just essentially, it's a required element that is to manage undesirable levels of sound in the town. We actually have, I looked at this the other day because I was curious as to what the town had related to noise. And so we do have a, a pretty good noise ordinance that's in the code. It's not in the zoning section. It's in the, it's in another section of the municipal code. And so this is just a snapshot from it that has the noise levels. So. So it's really a, the way it currently works, it's a code enforcement. If, if there's excessive noise, then there'd be, it'd be a code enforcement issue. Now, if we do start getting, like, like if an apartment building wants to come in, then they, they also have to address noise as part of their environmental analysis. So the next steps.
Just one observation for all those elements. I think there's a strong correlation between the circulation element, the safety element and the noise element in regards to roads. All of those point back to roads. Exiting noise production from the asphalt. So by splitting it over those elements, how it seems to me that it would make a lot of, like, would make a lot of sense to do a comprehensive review of that in some form, because they, you split them apart, you're not solving anything. Just an observation.
But I think also when you look at the noise element, you look at the downtown area where we have our vibrant downtown area surrounded by residential buildings that over time, you get a lot of concerns and complaints on noise from entertainment in downtown bleeding over into the neighborhood. So you can have specific areas where the noise is a factor versus kind of general noise across the town.
Yeah. And according to this, you have to roll up the sidewalks at 10:00 PM. So.
You must be talking about San and Selmo.
Yeah.
No, and the real problem we have with that is that the noise from the traffic is now louder than our permitted decibels. And so when we get complaints, when they just try to take the noise meter readings, it's very difficult. It's like impossible. And we, it's, it's when we get noise complaints about the downtown or some of the local restaurants, it's really a nightmare. Trying to, you know, raise the, you know, if, if the, if the exterior noise is already louder than this, then how are we ever supposed to deal with this? So, but anyway, nobody wants to raise the noise.
But as Linda mentions, it's, it's the way this is now implemented is through the police department. So it's, because it's a, it's a noise, it's a code enforcement noise issue. They have a very, I think they have a very fancy noise meter.
Yes, but it's also been issues where it's come to the council or come to the planning commission for some of the businesses that have CUPs.
An issue with the CUP.
Where it's come to address.
Yeah. If, if a CUP came in front of you, you would establish either operation hours where the noise would have to terminate or be below a certain level.
Or revoke one that's been in existence. So.
Closed when they have live music.
Or keep the doors closed. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Noise is always is one of those things that the community does get very vocal about. So.
Yeah, it was, for this one, I assumed that the council would want, need to be more involved, just given, you know, the two years ago, all of the ordinances about amplified music in the parklets and the public. And that was a very spicy topic for a few meetings. Whether or not there could be amplified public music in the parklist. And then also I'm just, for us, the Fairfax Lumper, that was one of the, it wasn't just the dust. They were talking about the noise with deliveries in the morning.
Yep. Okay. So I think, so this is the, just very simplified here. We will be submitting that the annual planning report, which primarily focuses on the housing element to on April first. And so the council is going to look at that at their first meeting in March. And then the mandatory general plan updates that we are required to do kind of first would be the safety element. Primarily focused on emergency evacuation routes, but also on updating the maps and related to fire flooding and all the other hazards. Some consistencies with the land use and consistencies of the town center element. And then there's other code updates. And we already have kind of dark sky kind of on the list. And so, anyway, that's, that's kind of the end of the presentation, but we can have a little bit of discussion about what, what, what does the planning commission want to do next? Do we want to have another work session, which we go through and, and have a, a brainstorming session about everything that we want to update? Or are there ideas that you have now? And?
A quick, quick question on the dark sky. So that is in the works to be implemented, Tom, right?
Well, yeah, I think that, I think that we had decided at a previous meeting, that's one thing that we wanted to take on this, this kind of calendar year.
Okay.
In 2024. So we can, we can start, we can put together a schedule and, and
Yeah.
Fill you some sample ordinances about what other communities do and start kind of generating ideas and find out what the planning mission likes wants to proceed with. So that's kind of a good side project that we could work on that I think would be, would be a nice project for the town.
Yeah, definitely. Appreciate it.
So some general questions and comments. Have we done annual progress, general plan progress reports in the past?
We did do one last year.
Okay. Was that like the first one we've done?
Yeah, we, I think we missed a few years. Yes.
That's a nice way of putting it. So with the housing, the annual housing element report that y'all have to do, and then the general plan. I think we have either in our general plan or in our code that they come to the planning commission prior to submission. So, and I don't think that's, I think it may be. I know one of them is in the general plan. No, I asked for them. I think one year I asked for them to come to us before they're submitted. And I know with the annual housing element, how we're doing report, you do it like it's a, it's a, I don't want to say survey monkey, but you have something online you fill out. But ideally what would be good going forward is to have something. And I'll look in the code and see if it's in the code and I'll pull out the general plan to see where it's in there. But if we have it brought to us before it's submitted, that would be great. And however you want to frame it, taking the information you have to provide in that report, you know, online, if we can get some review of that every year before it's submitted. And going forward, when we do our annual general plan progress report, that would be great to have that. And I don't know if what you're putting in here where you're saying what the accomplishments were for the general plan or the things that you're going to address in the general plan report that you submit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's based.
Because you've got recent accomplishments and things like that. So is this just capturing what you're going to submit?
This is just a, this is just a big picture presentation, but it's not what you're describing, which is kind of the detailed report that, that, that the county town council looks at and then approves and then it goes to the state. But yeah, I agree. It should come to the planning commission first. It just, it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just didn't, didn't happen this year because
A little bit busy.
Ran out of time.
Yeah. So going forward, that would be great to get that on the schedule.
Especially because, yeah, because I would envision that, I mean, the planning commission should be the body that oversees the general plans. When you think of that has to do, the general plan should come through the planning commission first. So I would agree with that. Yes.
Okay. So going back to.
Oh. Yeah, there's, there's two different agencies that like to see the report. There's the, the Office of Planning Research. And then there's the, then HCD and, but we, it's sort of this, it's the same.
Their due dates are so different. That's what I'm.
Right.
That's what I'm having a problem with. Because like if we're supposed to try to.
Yeah.
Get all our, well, okay. It's not due till April and I, that means I would have to get everything done by March. So that's what's happening here. It's going to have to go to the planning commission in February. I don't really think that's possible to get all the letters out to all those neighbors and find out, get a response and stuff. But, okay, maybe we'll.
Yeah, we, we can.
We'll come up with something that works for.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah. And then going back to history. When our prior planning, permanent planning director came on board. And this would be late 2017, early 2018, we had workshops and planning commission meetings reviewing the general plan and trying to come up with priorities. And, and if you look at the general plan at the back of it, there was like a, there's a spreadsheet with like 300 to 400 tasks that the general plan group put together as things that should be done on that general plan. So we had meetings on what made sense there, what we wanted to prioritize. We had somebody come. There was a volunteer that we tried to get to do some historical analysis of the downtown buildings, but there was also a gentleman. I think that was hired to do some work in that area. And he may have submitted some report. But he couldn't connect with the volunteer woman. But, so that was something that. we looked at as a part of that and something that we all felt was important for downtown to do. So what I was going to do was dig up the work that we did and maybe submit it back all back to you all. So you can see what we came up with, you know, some of the notes and maybe that would help give a sense of what we did back then, what we looked at with those 300 items, since nobody on the planning commission, other than Mimi was a part of that, that might be helpful for the rest of the commissioners to look at what we went through in along with looking at the general plan, you know, with new eyes, some of the things that I think we looked at back then or highlighted may not be relevant right now. So I think it would be good to take that look back and kind of
Yeah.
Maybe start from that.
That would be a good first step would be to kind of get get a good prioritization. A new prioritization of what what's important to the planning commission, because then, you know, we, of course, if we, especially if we're going to spend any money, we have to take it through the town council. So we'd have to present, find a way to present it to the town council so that they can approve a work program.
But I do agree that because when you go to other communities, they all have some type of a historical acknowledgement to part of their area. Whether some of that is just something they wrote on a placard. I mean, San Rafael has, I think, if you go down San Rafael downtown, there's little signs that says like San Rafael Historical Downtown District. And I don't know if those have any weight behind them or how those were addressed, but there's different types of historical recognition. The only one that we have officially here is in Rintown and Country Club, where we have one that's gone through the California process. So I think also for some of that, you know, some background and understanding of the different processes or the different classifications would be helpful as we go forward with that too. But I certainly agree. I think that's needed for downtown and anything we can do to protect our downtown from that perspective. I think the community would appreciate.
Yeah, I think there I mean, there's multiple moving parts there, but some buildings might might qualify for being an official registered historical building, like the one in the Tana Country Club. But so that's one thing, maybe that's true. And or maybe, and I personally don't think that's a good idea, but maybe the downtown center itself is something that needs to have some sort of status or maybe not. I mean, I'm but I was just curious if that was considered in the past or researched or proposed.
It was considered, it just didn't go very far and tried to get it moving.
Yeah, it have, it has consequences that might not be desirable as well.
Yeah, I was going to chime in with lawyer brain that we need a big legal presentation with that, I think, because there's a difference to Commissioner Swift, like you said, with the sort of placard and informal things, but versus specific buildings in downtown, a lot of property owners don't like it because it really constrains what you can do with your property. And and we wouldn't want anybody to think that we foisted this on them without understanding the implications.
Yeah, it's a very tricky process. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. As I said, I'm not a proponent. I'm just curious what the status is or what the history is.
I had a couple of questions just from the staff report and and frankly, it was in the presentation. I just had it in a different PDF. When you go through our Rena allocation and and we're talking about the units achieved, I think this was mentioned before. But the categories stack up like like we saw in the 2015 to 2022 period, it discusses that we had 80 units more achieved than we needed. But in the above moderate category, we had 18 units achieved and our allocation was 23. But you can sort of, you're not considered to be in in not out of compliance with that, to the extent that you have a greater number of of a lower category unit. So, you know, in our 2023 31 allocation, we have 184 above moderate units and a lot of our discussion has been focused on the sort of workforce housing overlay is, I think, is now like a 192 unit chunk of our plan. If we have instead of 71 moderate units, 110 and things like that, those numbers, to the extent they're over the moderate category can be attributed.
Yeah, generally they, there's a focus on kind of the lower income. I mean, I think if you had all low income and no moderate or no above moderate, then that they that might kind of be looked to scans at. But yeah, generally the focus is on creating the lower income units so that you can have the workforce housing and the ability for lower income folks to live in the community.
Okay. And then it will not in the in the staff report, and I realize because a lot of this is probably moving very quickly, but I noticed that HCD did a letter back February 5th, saying that the December 9th draft project draft housing element we submitted since we also submitted an adopted housing elements on December 19th, their sort of punting review, which would have been due February 6th for the February 16th deadline for review of the adopted plan. And then looking at after that, at the town council's housing element webpage, I noticed that there's a February 8th update and there's public comment open till the 16th. So I just you know, just because if we were talking about the housing element and general plan progress and this sort of timing, I'm just curious if you know, there's a little bit of an update on how that timing is working out. It looked like the change, there were very, very few changes in the February.
It would just technical corrections data was needed to be updated, that type of thing. And so anytime you make any change to the housing element, you have to even if it's minor and technical and I mean, you can fix typos without having to repost it. But if you do anything that results in new data or new information, then it has to be reposted for seven days. And then re reviewed, re reviewed by HCD.
Okay.
It doesn't change the fact that the the if it if they're minor and not significant changes, like just data that doesn't impact programs or policies, then that's covered by the resolution when the council adopted it, which allows those minor changes to be made without it having to be readopted.
Okay. And that's not going to affect that HCD review. So like tomorrow, we're not going to get a letter from HCD saying, hey, we noticed you have a February 8 update, even though it's a few changes now, we're starting our 60 day clock again.
They have 30 days to review it, I believe.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, discussions?
Oh, so the timeline isn't up there anymore. But I guess this is related to Commissioner Swift's point on on having sort of the overview and and everyone giving their feedback. But for the elements that we have mandatory changes, I know we get when, when meetings are planned, the notice goes out 10 days in advance. If there's any way to sort of get in order that we think they're coming or even just like a a few extra weeks heads up that, hey, this is when we're going to first bring the safety element or things to you so that maybe we can send you like you said, the suggestions and priorities on those plans updated in advance so that they're not coming in in the the four day window between the agenda being posted in the meeting.
Yeah, and we should be able to put, put together a schedule of when those updates will be coming, like we can make that an agenda item and just bring it to the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think the question, though, is trying to get something to review ahead of the Friday before the meeting. So whether
Or review time. Yeah.
So whether that's workshops, looking at something and coming back at another meeting, which may be one way to do that. Here's, you know, the draft that they came up with, then we provide comments and it comes back because we have that ability and that flexibility now to spend more than one meeting on these things, that might be the way
Yeah.
It could work.
Like I was thinking to how we had the sort of fall winter roadmap of, oh, first we're going to have a study session on the ridgeline, then the workforce housing overlay, something like that, just so that we can we don't need the version reflecting necessarily all the changes in the staff report, but you know, what you, what the staff is looking at that they're that everyone's writing their changes into, we could also see that at that time and and sort of start considering it in parallel.
Okay. 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 Thank you for the. I think we have a member of the public. So since this is an agenda item, we should probably give him an opportunity if you'd like to speak.
Good point. We are on agenda item number four. Yes.
Hi, I'm Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. Regarding agenda item number four and tonight's planning commission meeting, I have a number of questions that I'm puzzled why there haven't been disclosed in the staff report to the public. Hoping that you can provide an answer this evening so that everybody in Fairfax is informed with transparent government. Question number one. There's discussion about hiring a housing planner. How much does the town anticipate spending on this new position for a housing planner? And for how long and who's going to pay for it? What part of the budget is it going to come out of? Is it budgeted? I think the public's entitled to know and answer that promptly before they're hired. So that this can be discussed because this is a material cost item. Number two. The number of ADUs that were applied for in 2023, curiously, wasn't included in the report because it wasn't available. This report was published, I guess, here in mid February of 2024, but the number of ADUs that were applied for in Fairfax for 2023 isn't known. My guess is that the number of applications fell off a cliff. Is that true?
Let me respond.
It.
Yeah. We're, we're required to report a lot of information, not just the number, and it's due to the state on April 1st. So at the beginning of the year, we're gathering information. It requires me to get rent amounts that people are charging for their ADU. So I have to send letters out to everyone who took out a permit and I have to wait for them to respond. So there's a lot of work that happens between January 1st until the deadline where we report the number of units, which is April 1st.
Right. But if this commission is going to be making a recommendation to the planning commission and sorry, to the town council, pardon me, I misspoke. And if the public is paying attention to this and wants to have some input, the part that was left out that is knowable right now is how many ADU permits were applied for in 2023, not the rent amount.
If you come down, if you come down to town hall during officer hours, we can tell you how many were applied for in 2023. We just haven't published it because we're not finished with the HCD report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if 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 policy is being made and recommendations are being made, it would be very helpful, I think, to include this sooner rather than later, because my guess, I don't, can you answer us tonight? Because my guess is that it fell off a cliff because of the rent control ordinances.
When you say fell off a cliff, do you mean?
That the number is lower.
Lying.
The number is lower.
Okay. I have to go back and check. Do you know off the top of your head if it's lower than past years? I know we've had we, you know, we've had higher years for for ADUs. This year wasn't one of the highest, but I don't think it's the lowest either.
Okay, so for those of you that are new on the planning commission or might not have attended the town council meeting where Renee Goddard, when she passed, I believe she was mayor at the time, but somebody would need to check this. When they passed the rent controls, there was a discussion about the potential impact on ADUs and revisiting it. And that if it did have a negative effect, that some of what policy was, was going to be revised because of the negative effect that it was having because they did not want to have a negative effect is what I understood the situation to be. Anyway, I don't want to belabor this, but I think it's really critical, important information because of the disincentivizing, disincentivizing effect on housing of the rent control ordinances. Then just equally as important as the number of ADUs applied for is the number of ADUs that were actually built. Because they could have been applied for and some people are still only coming to comprehend the disincentivizing effect of these almost strictest in California rent control ordinances that are still in limbo, which are having a very detrimental effect on housing supply in Fairfax. So this is a big issue. Won't spend more time on it, but it would be nice if you wanted public input. If that were in the staff report, I think that's readily available now and it shouldn't be just someone who's intrepid enough to go down to town hall and make that request. It should be public knowledge that is disseminated so people can actually write in for those who can't attend here. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the data will become available. We got to give it a little time.
Well, just a point of clarification, the APR, the report actually goes to the council on March 6th, so the data will be completed for that because we have to submit it by April 1st. So we we will have it done for the town council meeting on March 6th.
With the to that, will the report that goes to them show prior years as well to see any trends or just?
No, it's just here. It's the beginning of arena cycle.
Yeah.
I mean, there is some dialogue, there will be some dialogue in the staff report about how the, you know, like similar to what you saw tonight, the chart, the big picture, what happened during the last arena cycle. But yeah, we don't belabor the last arena cycle because the point is to start fresh with 2023 and start reporting on this arena cycle. So.
Through the chair, I see no more hands online. You can probably close public comment.
Okay, public comment closed. Having no further discussion items.
I just before we close this item, just wanted to give Todd Greenberg a couple of answers based off of my understanding of the presentation we had, because I think it was discussed, I think, probably before you, you were able to make it for your comment, but for the song, what slide? Slide five or six on hiring a new planner, I think the planning director can correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked and you noted that that position was included in the budget for this past fiscal year that runs through June 30.
Correct. It's been in the budget since last July.
And that's a staff member in the planning department, you know, this working in a similar portfolio to like Kara or somebody.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I don't know offhand, but I'm
That information is available.
No, 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 we're not going to have an open discussion here, please.
And then just a point of clarification, we are not approving anything or making a recommendation tonight, right? There's no action being taken coming out of this agenda. Okay. So I think it's fair to ask that we have all of the information if we were making a recommendation. That, that I think was it.
Thank you. Okay. Study session closed. Thank you for your presentation. On to item number five, meeting minutes. Are there any comments on the meeting minutes?
I had a, this isn't a change. I had a question on, uh, no, no, not on anything specific, just, um, we had an agenda item last year recommending or approving a going to action minutes. And I know the town council had, I didn't, I don't recall all the specifics in agenda item on the recorder for these minutes. And these minutes are very, very detailed. And I was just wondering if that's, we're expecting that to change. Because this is more consistent to, to what we had been doing. And I thought we had an agenda item where our meeting minute recording process was going to be going to a different style of, of meeting minutes.
You're right. She, well, okay, so she's including what she, what the minutes said they were going to do is they wouldn't list what the public said by name, right? They would just indicate their comments and your comments would be, yeah, you're right. They are more detailed. I don't know why this is happening. It's not happening because the council directed us anything.
Okay, yeah, no, that was, you know, I was
And it's curious because just so you know, our minutes clerk has retired from doing the council minutes. Yeah, so I got me. Maybe now that she's retired from them, she has more time to work on ours.
I'll make a
Yeah, comments?
No, I was going to make a motion.
I have one, I have one minor comment. I I have one, first one minor correction. Where is that? Page number seven? In, I think that is the third bullet where I'm indicating the height limit should be thirty-five feet. Well, and then it should be only allowing overruns for elevators and stairs with a setback. That was the part of the discussion. It's yeah, thirty-five feet while only allowing overruns for elevators and stairs with a setback. It, that was preventing that you will get a large vertical wall on the edge of the sidewalk. I will open it for comments in the public for the meeting minutes.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I'll be brief here. I believe in a recent town council meeting, our current mayor, Barbara Kohler, expressed her preference for more detail than action minutes provide. For the public that might be listening, there are, as I understand it, four different types of meeting minutes and action minutes are the bare minimum. Summary meeting minutes have more detail and people can look it up online for the rest of it. But I would like to commend the meeting minute preparer, Tony De Francis, for your meeting minutes, which are superior, in my opinion, to what the public sees from the town council meeting minutes, which Councilwoman Hellman has sought to edit and the public is really unaware and has doubts now about whether the meeting minutes are being presented as the factual occurrences of the meeting minutes. So I would encourage anybody, this body, this commission, to provide as much detail as they can on a reasonable basis so that as Mayor Kohler indicated, you can actually go back and understand what happened. I won't talk further about it, but I would advise against going to action minutes and I personally appreciate the meeting minutes as they are produced for the planning commission currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt this way. I usually don't, but we are having a detailed conversation on minutes and I need to tell you that we do save the transcripts. That was agreed on by this commission a few months ago. And we save the transcripts that save every single word of these minutes right here, which is why it was so important that we were forty-five minutes late today. So we could get every single one of those minutes. So we do have actually a very detailed source.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Yeah, I remember that discussion. I think it will be revisited. Yeah, thank you.
Well, to that, and I do like the minutes as they're presented to us. Versus just straight minutes that say, here's what we decided. So I think this does add to an understanding of what the commission did and, and the planning commission held. And these aren't as detailed as they have been in the past, so it, it's a good kind of middle ground, I think.
Well, maybe we should, for our next meeting, we should put an agenda, an item on the agenda to revisit that and see if we can nail that down, how we're going to move forward.
But with that, if we're ready, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I make a motion to approve the minutes from the December fourteenth twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting with the one correction stated by Chair Jansen.
A second.
Hey, Swift?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Chair Jansen?
Yes.
Okay, motion.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any commissioner comments or requests? Commissioner Swift?
So over the last several months, we've gone through a lot of code changes with a timeline that we had to meet. One of the things that I saw that came to us were parts of the code where we had redlined, we had crossed, you know, things that were crossed out. And then we had the dots that said everything between these two sections is the same as what's in the existing code. I think that when we get changes like that versus getting the code section in total with the redlined and the crossed out, I think it makes it hard for commissioners. And I know we all take a look at, you know, the existing code versus the changes that aren't word for word in there. It doesn't repeat everything. So I think that takes, you know, that's hard to compare the two, but you know, we do that, but I think it also makes it easier to make difference, you know, to make I won't say errors in it, but you kind of, when you're doing that, you don't necessarily look at other sections or it's harder to look when we're looking at the commercial areas between four different zones that we compare across them to make sure that, you know, what we're saying in, in the commercial zone is the same section that we're putting in somewhere else, if it's relevant. It's also, I think, makes it more difficult for the town council. If you're not giving them the entire code section with just the red line and the lines out. And I know for certain that it makes it harder for the public to understand the code and understand the sections. And I think, you know, some of that drives some of the questions we get from the public when they don't see the full code section with the changes in it. And I know, again, I'll state that we had a timeline that we were trying to work against and a lot of work to accomplish and a lot of changes to make. But I would like us going forward, now that we don't have that deadline and we can do things like the safety element and, and, you know, some of these other changes that we're doing, we have more time and I think it makes a better process for us for eventually when it goes to the council and certainly for the public, that when we get changes to a code, that the entire code that we're changing is, is in there with just the the additions and deletions. So I would like to request going forward that we try to do that. That was one comment. Also, at some point, if we can think about, you know, we talked about corrections to the code, things like, you know, we dark sky, something we want to include in there, but we also had talked about that there are errors in some of the codes that have been there for a while. We want to do cleanup. So if we could have just along with the other things, like give us a heads up when we're going to be looking at safety, when we're going to be looking at some of these other things, if we plot out and calendar generally some timeframes for when we think we're going to be addressing those. And maybe some thought to how we break that up. Because that certainly wouldn't be something that would probably be just one meeting that, you know, we kind of have that calendar so we can be thinking about that ahead and kind of going through that. I think that would be helpful to know what's ahead. And then my third comment is just that Sonoma State had its planning commission conference a few weeks ago, so Jeff went, I went, Kara went and the slides will be provided to us at some point and then you can share them. And I don't know if you had a chance to check to see if those are available or not.
Yeah, this, that particular professor will take a little bit of pestering to get those out of them, but we will get them eventually, so.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you. Regarding the, so the code changes, I presume if you edit the text, that you work on the full body of the text, right? So it would be easy to if you work on a section, a code section, you make edits in it, you work on the full section. So instead of just giving the changes, it would be very easy to give the full text. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a matter of just, it's just a style difference. The particular consultant that we use like to use the abbreviated kind of code writing style. So it's just a, a style preference, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Just going to follow up on to Commissioner Swift's point on the sort of getting the heads up for the code section updates. I think it is important to calendar it just because for, you know, Brown Act issues, we can't share amongst ourselves ideas for what we would want to change in sections and language. So having even just in a, an agenda item that's not intended to take up a lot of time, but where we can sort of formally at least say, these are the changes I was thinking about in anticipation of a future meeting where we discuss actual proposed updates. Because we can't, you know, more than two people directly sort of coordinate.
Good points. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Then I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
You're looking at me, aren't you? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I'll call roll. Swift?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Chair Jansen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.